Good evening and welcome to the January 19th, 2021 meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission. And before we move to the substance of the agenda, I want to provide some information about the way we'll be conducting this evening's meeting. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2520 and N 2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act pursuant to the orders of the Health Officer of San Mateo County. And as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business, it is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. Commissioners and city staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via the cable channel 26 or live stream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during the public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting in place of email public comments. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, excuse me, or else enter star nine to raise your hand if dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. So with that said preliminarily, then we'll move to the order of agenda itself. So we'll start with the roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Berman.
President.
Commissioner Ferguson.
President.
Commissioner Godwin.
President.
Commissioner Hauser.
President.
Commissioner Lille.
President.
And Commissioner Niblin.
President. Thank you. Commissioner Berman, could you lead us in the salute to the flag this evening?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. That'll take us then to the first item of administrative business, which is the approval of order of agenda. Excuse me, is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Berman.
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Berman to approve the order of agenda. Is there a second? Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a second from Commissioner Lille to approving the order of agenda. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes six votes in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. So the next item then of administrative business is to approve the minutes of our meeting of November 2nd, 2020, and our meeting of November 16th, 2020. And I would be prepared to entertain a motion either collectively to approve the minutes or individually if that is preferred. Subject to any comments that folks may have with respect to the minutes. Commissioner Hauser.
I'll make a motion to approve both items as they are.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Hauser's moved that we approve the minutes of both the meeting of November 2nd and November 16th of 2020. Is there a second? Commissioner Ferguson.
I second the motion to approve the minutes.
Excellent, so we have a motion, a second with respect to the approval of the minutes. Commissioner Murdock, I'm sorry, Mr. Murdoch, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes six votes in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. So the next item of administrative business is designation of liaison to city council meeting. I see that none is required. Does that remain the case, Mr. Murdoch?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. That then takes us to oral communications. Excuse me, and this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the commission under oral communication this evening?
And just a reminder to use the raise hand function if you're using the Zoom application, or pressing star nine if you're dialed in by phone. And this is again for any items not on the agenda. And I am seeing none, Chair.
Thank you so much. So we'll go ahead and move past this item. We'll move then to our consent item, and this is specifically CDP 42420, which is file number 2020019, which is an emergency coastal development permit, CDP 42420, which is filed by applicant city of Pacifica for demolition of a portion of the Pacifica, I'm sorry, the Beach Boulevard promenade and repair of voids in the Beach Boulevard seawall immediately north of Pacifica Pier. This is by way of recommended sequel action, not applicable, and the recommended action of the commission is to receive and file. If being a consent item, is there ordinarily a presentation, or are we just, is it just an information item? Do we actually have to vote to receive it? What is the standard protocol here?
So no staff reports required. It is an item that requires public comment on the consent calendar, and it will require a motion and a vote by the commission. I'm happy to provide a brief explanation of what this item is. Typically, the commissions ask for that even though it's not necessary as part of the consent calendar.
Now, in deference to our ordinary practice, why don't we go ahead and take a couple of minutes to hear from you on it?
Sure. So I think as the commissioners and many members of the community know, periodically during the winter storm season, the Beach Boulevard seawall has experienced voids, which sometimes have resulted in failures of the wall. That happened again in December. Public works staff noticed the void. It quickly resulted in a portion of the wall allowing water to intrude and wash out some of the backfill. It's, you know, as you can imagine, with the ongoing action of the ocean, somewhat of a developing situation. Even since publication of the staff report, the Public Works Department was able to perform some of the work anticipated within the city's jurisdiction behind mean high tide. And so according to Associate Civil Engineer Ryan Marquez, Public Works Staff was able to seal up the opening in the wall last week, which is good news, and they're beginning to work on backfill and restoration of the area. They concurrently undertook placement of additional riprap and perhaps replacement of some of the riprap that was out there under Coastal Commission Emergency Coastal Development Permit as well. And so work is ongoing, and they hope to complete the work by the end of January.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. I'll ask commissioners whether there are any questions for Mr. Murdoch with respect to this consent item. Seeing none, I guess we'll ask if there are any public comments with respect to the consent item.
And I see none, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. I think then I'll ask if Commissioner has a motion. Commissioner Hauser.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Murdoch, do I need to make a motion using the terminology for the recommended action, or can I just make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I think either one is fine. Thank you.
Excellent, so we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, which will incorporate the recommendation to receive and file the report. So motion to approve, is there a second? Commissioner Berman.
I second the motion.
Great, so we've got Commissioner Hauser's motion and Commissioner Berman's second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
And the consent calendar passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll then move on to a new public hearings, and the first of the new public hearings is to amend CAP 8-18. And this is file number 2020-20, which is amendments cannabis activity permit, CAP 8-18, to modify requirements of resolution number 2019031 of the Planning Commission of the City of Pacifica related to the timing requirements for the first floor storefront window modifications, specifically condition of approval number nine, and payment of outstanding and applicable processing fees related to the CAP relative to condition of approval number 18 in relation to an existing cannabis retail operation approved in 2019 for retail sale of adult use medicinal cannabis at 450 Dondy Way, Suite 2 in Pacifica. The recommended sequel action on this is not applicable, and the recommended action for this evening is to continue the items to Pacifica Planning Commission's meeting of February 16, 2021. Mr. Murdoch, is there anything else to be said other than what I've already read into the record?
I don't think so, Chair. Just requesting the continuance due to nonavailability of the applicant for the amendment, and so we're looking to reschedule it to the meeting of February 16th.
So I think what we're going to be hoping to entertain is a motion to continue. Before I do that, I guess I'll ask if there is any public comment with respect to this item. And again, insofar as we have public comment here, recognizing that the item is actually to be continued, I would request that the public comment be focused on the issue of whether a continuance is appropriate. And again, I'll ask if there's any public comment on that matter.
Yes, Chair, we do have one individual with a hand raised. Just give me a moment, and I'll prepare to switch over for public comment.
Yep.
All right, Henry Barrigan, your time is beginning now. Please go ahead.
Barrigan, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. We are supporting the continuance in regards to this amendment. First of all, my name is Henry Barrigan, and I am the store manager for Rockaway Enterprise. DBA is Coastside Dispensary here in Pacifica. I feel ardent about this particular issue. There has been many moving parts in particular to the first floor storefront window modifications the city has enforced. This enforcement forced us to not only spend 60,000 to 75,000 extra on this modification alone, but the store opening was pushed back a year. As an employee and as a father, it's been very hard, you know, with this postponed on the year to make my monthly bills with the store opening being postponed. I, you know, it's a struggle to keep fully employed. Luckily, the owners have granted me the opportunity of managing other projects of theirs. Otherwise, my livelihood would have been dismay and devastating through this pandemic and abnormal times that we're in. A lot of energy and capital has gone into this project. We are ambivalent about someone else not having to go through the proper steps that we have. I yield back, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrigan. Are there any additional public comment with respect to this matter, and again with a particular focus on the request to continue?
I don't see any other hands raised, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission then for discussion and a possible motion. I'll ask my colleagues if they have a discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Ferguson.
If nobody has any discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please go ahead.
I move that we continue this item to the Planning Commission meeting of February 16th for recommendation.
Thank you. So we have Commissioner Ferguson's motion. Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and the motion to continue to February 16th has been seconded by Commissioner Lille. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we'll then move to the second item under new public hearings, and that is TUP 1-20. And this is file number 2020-013, Temporary Use Permit, excuse me, TUP 120 filed by Iglesias de Cristo to operate a church within a tent erected beneath an existing covered arena structure for a period not to exceed six months at 650 Cape Breton Drive in Pacifica. And the recommended sequel action at this time is not applicable. And the recommended action again at this time is to continue the item to the Planning Commission meeting of February 16, 2021. Mr. Murdoch, is there anything additional to add at this time?
No, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Well, again, my anticipation is that what we would be looking at is a motion to continue this item to the meeting of the Planning Commission of February 16, 2021. I recognize that we'll get a lot of folks here who are present presumably with respect to this item. If there is public comment, of course, we'll take it. We would, of course, ask that the public comment be focused on, again, the issue of the request for continuance. And I guess the other thing I, well, let's go ahead and see who wants to speak at this point. Maybe, Mr. Murdoch, you can call for a public comment, and then we can perhaps assess where we are after we see who is looking to speak, notwithstanding that the matter is looking to be continued.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands raised. I appreciate, let me change that, there's one hand raised. Again, I appreciate the restraint from the public. The substance of the item, really, we're just taking an action to reschedule tonight. So with that said, again, Chair, there's one hand raised for public comment.
Looks like it's from Ms. Taverna, is that right?
Yes.
Well, why don't we go ahead and see what, it looks like I see a second hand as well from Ms. Poyana. So why don't we go ahead and call for those two public comments? Well, why don't we hold on a second? I want to see how many hands we ultimately end up with here. If it ends up being an extraordinarily large number, again, I really want to get a sense of who all wants to speak.
I'm seeing four hands raised currently.
All right. I see five at this point. I think before we launch in, one of the questions I might have for my colleagues is whether or not if we end up with a significant number of folks who want to speak to it, again, recognizing that we're going to have a substantive conversation about this on February 16th, whether or not we want to take a look at whether three minutes is perhaps more than time than we need with respect to the particular item here, again, recognizing we'll be taking comment again on the 16th. Well, that said, I guess what I'll do is, Commissioner Berman.
I agree, Chair. I think given that the topic that the community will be discussing is the continuance of this item, and we will be further discussing on February 16th, I would support a shorter timeframe for public comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser.
I would concur with both you and Commissioner Berman on that.
Mr. Murdoch, I'm thinking perhaps maybe two minutes would be appropriate for the comments that we have, is that, and I want to exercise my prerogative as the Chair to put that out there.
Absolutely, Chair. I've reset the timer to two minutes, and we can begin public comment whenever you're prepared.
Thank you. Why don't we start with Ms. Taverna, since hers was the first hand, and we'll move forward from there.
Thank you so much, commissioners. My name's Evelyn Taverna, and I live within a few blocks of the proposed church site. And my comments, I'll be brief because I know you have, you'll do a continuance on this. But in looking at the open space meeting where the church representative presented the plan, I had four major issues of concern. One was, of course, traffic and parking. I believe their estimates are way off. Though one of the major things is that we're up against a very high fire area in the back here. At that particular location, there is no way, there's only one way in and one way out, and it would really impact that area as far as people being able to evacuate. The other issue is noise possibly created by this, and also sanitation, depending on how many people would be at that church. Their plan is to do it open air, I believe, where the corral is right now, and noise transfers very readily back here. But I think the main thing is the traffic and evacuation issues that I would really like to hope that you would look at very strongly. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I'm on mute there. Thank you, Ms. Taverna. Next speaker, please.
Next will be Karen Poyani.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you very much, commissioners. Appreciate the chance to say something. My question is, why is the agenda item being delayed until the February meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Poyani. This is actually not a question answer period, but your comments are noted. Do you have any other comments?
No, that would be it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next commenter, please.
Next, we have Mary Ann Waterman.
Thank you, Ms. Waterman, please go ahead.
Hello, hi, commissioners, thank you for being here, listening to me. We own the property directly attached to the corral, 724 Cape Breton. Grandchildren live there, running in the streets. Number one, why did you dismiss her question about being continued? Why you're not telling me why this is continued? And number two, where did this come from to be at this site that is not a commercial site? It's an open residentially zoned site. There's going to be traffic, there's going to be noise, there's going to be littering. We are the furthest street from the police and the fire in all of Pacifica, and now you're going to bring in hundreds of more people into our little neighborhood, a little tiny street where you have to go to the side to get down the street. I have many, many questions that two minutes is not enough for. Did the traffic, the zoning, the, how did you even entertain this idea? And bringing outsiders into our town, not even into our town, into the back of the valley with one way in and one way out? And again, why is this continued, and you dismissed her continuation? So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Waterman. Next commenter, please.
Next is Michael Casey.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity to make a comment or two. I've lived on Cape Breton Drive for almost 50 years. It's very tranquil back here, normally peaceful area. We do have more people, of course, as everywhere, living at home now due to the pandemic and the economic situation and the fact that already pre-existing was kids graduating from college. Should be talking about the ever-increasing number of people and cars that are back here well before this church ever came along. Now, I'm new to this topic of the church, the prospect of the church, relatively speaking. I read the paper occasionally. I'm not quite sure, I guess, I think I heard about one article in the paper, and the only reason I'm here tonight is because somebody unknown put a flyer on my front porch. And what I'm curious about is, there was some talk on the official Pacifica dialogue about houses only within 500 feet of the corral would be either considered or emailed or kept informed as to what the dialogue is, and what if you're 600 feet away or whatever? I think that that's an arbitrary limitation, but I agree with Ms. Waterman who just spoke on every point that she made, and more particularly for me at this point right now is, who are these people, and what are they all about, and where are they headquartered, and what is their philosophy, and what is their approach to the community? Have they written a paper to the neighborhood saying, oh, here we are, we'd love to join you, here's why you should welcome us, et cetera? I'm not against churches, I'm a churchgoer myself, but back here, I don't think we needed another church for all the reasons that Mary Ann said. So I think there's a lot that the community needs to be told about who these people are and why they're doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you.
Mr. Murdoch, do we have any other public speakers?
Yes, Chair, there are four hands raised remaining. Lucy Shepherd, you're next, please.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Ms. Shepherd, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I live at 724, I share a fence with the corral. I have two young boys and a baby girl on the way. There are a lot of other little young kids back here, dogs. We fully enjoy our neighborhood being quiet. We all, I think, love the corral being next door. It was a good addition to the community. I want to know why we weren't told that this specific lot was even up for sale. I know a lot of you guys are on Nextdoor, so you've seen the commotion that this has caused. So I don't why, don't know why this is even being entertained at this moment. I've looked into this church, they have a really shady past. It's going to bring more crime to our little neighborhood back here. I just don't know why this is even an option. But I agree with everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Mr. Murdoch, can we have the next speaker, please?
Next is Jewel Wally.
Am I on?
Yes, Ms. Wally, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I totally agree with our last speaker, Lucy. I feel like we were bamboozled in this whole thing. We never heard the land was for sale. I didn't hear anything about it until I started reading about it on Nextdoor. And I think if we knew the land was for sale, we could have got the back, you know, had the Pacifica Land Trust possibly buy this land, by the citizens could have bought it, and we could have used it, continued to use it as park space. I agree, I'm not right on the street, the traffic probably is not going to affect me, but it's going to be increased traffic. My children ride their bikes on Otsted, wear and tear on the roads. These are very small streets, the traffic has been terrible back here already. There's only two exits from the valley. During the Paradise Fires, my husband and I had suitcases packed because we were afraid that our community, we'd have to evacuate quickly. And in addition, we're going to be having some more homes back here, the Otsted Town Homes with the Pacifica School District at the old Otsted School Site, and that's going to increase the traffic as well. So I'd like to see more transparency just in what's happening and before any decisions are made to put, especially a church that meets five times a week, it's not just a little quiet Sunday event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wally. Mr. Murdoch, next speaker, please.
Next is Lori Yap.
Hi.
Please go ahead.
I'm Lori Yap, and I do live on Cape Breton, and I understand the continuance, and I'm fine with that. However, I think listening to everyone here, I went ahead and raised my hand, I think it'd be very helpful if this group here would explain how the process works. A lot of us are new to this, and it was hard to find out about it. We did start getting the word out with those flyers and whatnot when we heard it was only going to be 500 feet. So I think a little bit more of explaining how this process works for all of us that are pretty new to this and want to have our voices heard would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yap. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have LC.
LC, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. My name's Lori, I live at the back of the valley. With the 500 feet rule, I would ask the Planning Commission to consider contacting everyone that's within 500 feet of the bordering land that this church has already purchased. that's within 500 feet of the bordering land that this church has already purchased without the permit. That would include Glacier, Cape Breton, Big Bend, and St. Lawrence. Not just 500 feet from the entrance, but everyone that will border the land owned. And so, I would appreciate if that is considered. I'd also, I'd also second the opinion that the numbers given at the Open Space Committee did seem to be low, and there were a lot of questions asked. And I just find it curious that even though more than 20 people expressed concerns about the potential plan, that this particular entity decided to go ahead with the purchase, knowing that they did not have the permit yet that they wanted. And so, I will give up the rest of my time.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any additional speakers, Mr. Murdock?
Yes, Chair, there's one hand remaining, and that is from Sherry Stoddard.
Okay, Ms. Stoddard, please go ahead.
Ms. Stoddard, you're on mute. Chair, there's one other hand raised. Maybe we can shift to that other speaker while Sherry figures out.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Stoddard, why don't you go ahead?
Hi, sorry to bother you. I'm calling from Maui, Hawaii. I live out here now, but I grew up at 736 Cape Breton Drive. My mom still lives there, she's retired. My brother lives with her and helps take care of her. The streets, I don't know if you've been back there, but the streets are very narrow. The cul-de-sac at the end for turning around, I just worry, like, backing out of her driveway, getting into a car accident, I don't, I just hope you guys are doing your homework and going back there and seeing that the hills, I mean, the hills have slid before with the mudslides. This is a church that has over 7,000 locations throughout the world and 151 countries. I don't know how, with all the churches we have in Pacifica, how they bought this piece of property without any neighbors knowing. I'm just really, I just can't understand the amount of anxiety all those people are going through. And every time I go home to hear church bells five times a week, it just, it's such a quiet, peaceful, calm, foxes, deer, mountain lions, I just can't see a huge mega-church going back in the corral that we used to go up there and grab ice cream and candy from. It's just, it's heartbreaking. And I'm obviously concerned about it because I'm calling from Hawaii right now, trying to be on a Zoom meeting with you. So, I do understand that there's a continuance for February 16th, so I look forward to hearing more about this and how, I don't know if it could be prevented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stoddard. I guess we have one more comment? Mr. Murdock?
Yes, Cleo Borak.
Please go ahead. Cleo, are you there? Why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, just, you know, I didn't notice I was muted. Hi, everyone. Thank you for listening to me. I'm actually Jewel's neighbor. I'm not in the immediate proximity of the place there on Cape Breton, but my daughter did take horseback riding lessons there. And speaking of homework, I have done a little bit of the homework, and I looked at the paperwork that was filed, especially at the traffic report, because I think everyone is very worried about evacuation in case of fire. And what I noticed is that we are comparing the traffic that the church says is going to be very, very low for them. They put it at 40 cars, 40 people per day, which is very hard to believe. And they compare it to a stable, which is in San Juan Capistrano. Whoever did this report, why did they go to San Juan Capistrano to look for a stable that has comparable traffic? Looking at the stable that they proposed, which is Sycamore Trails, this is a stable with no less than eight arenas and about 10 roundpins. I am counting here 22 instructors. And I could tell you more, I'm looking at their website. It's a huge stable with an enormous amount of business in Orange County, where there's a lot of interest for horseback riding. And the conclusion of the traffic report is that actually the church is going to have less than that horseback riding facility would have. I totally disagree with this, and I think we should take a good look at the traffic report, why it was compared to San Juan Capistrano of all places, and, you know, why can't we find something closer by that is more similar in size?
Thank you, Ms. Borak. Is that the public comment then, Mr. Murdock?
There are three hands raised, Chair. The next is a dial-in number ending in 8586.
Please go ahead.
And for those dialed in who I'm calling by the last four of your phone number, if you would, please identify yourself by name for the record, that would help us greatly. Thank you.
And again, I'd sort of repeat that we're really wanting to focus on public comment that pertains to the request to continue, as again, this matter is going to be continued and discussed at length at an upcoming meeting of the Planning Commission. Next comment, please.
So, we'll move on to dial-in caller 4317.
Thank you. Please go ahead. If you could state your name, that would be helpful, just for the folks who transcribe these meetings.
Hello, my name is Tony Sills, and I live on Cape Breton. I just really want to make sure the Planning Committee takes into account that this is going to impact more than just 500 feet from the stable. You have other areas that are going to be impacted by traffic, by noise, by just the additional crime that might come because of this mega-church. So, I think that the boundaries that have been set need to be reset, refocused, and revisited, because I think narrowing that scope doesn't give you a good idea of the impact that it does have in Park Pacifica. I know that there's going to be continued conversations later on next month, but I do also think that there needs to be someone who can come out to the Planning Committee, taking a look at our streets, seeing how narrow they are, understanding what we live in, to be able to better assess whether this is the right decision or not to allow this mega-church to come in place. To give you an idea, and I know some of my fellow residents have already made this comment, but you have two parked cars on both sides, you cannot pass two vehicles, four cars can't be in the lane. It does not work that way. The infrastructure has not been made to fit that level of vehicles driving in and out of the facility. I'll yield my comments until next week.
Thank you, Ms. Sills. Next comment, please.
Our next speaker is John Schultz.
Mr. Schultz, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is John Schultz, and I live on the Cape Breton Drive for over 45 years, and raised my children here, and they're all graduates from Tarrano High School. And I'm outraged, just like my neighbors have stressed their concerns here tonight. With little research, you can discover that the INC Church, which is a non-traditional religious sect, has mega cathedrals throughout the world, and we don't need a mega cathedral here in Pacifica. INS plans to have services six days a week with hundreds of vehicles up and down our street. They currently occupy Ceremonie Del Rey, which is the Jefferson Union High School District building, and there's hundreds of cars there every day having services. So, I'd like to speak again in February to bring more concentration to this issue. Thank you, and I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Murdock?
Next, we have Erin Missias.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Erin Missias of Lynnamar. First of all, I'm slightly stunned because I was not expecting any conversation on this topic tonight. I expected this to be continued to the next meeting. So, first of all, I wanted to let you know that I have started a petition to have the Planning Commission and the City of Pacifica Council and staff take a hard look at the historical use of this property. I was fortunate enough to spend four and a half hours today inside the Pacifica Historical Society, reviewing the documents associated with this parcel. And the first thing I wanted to point out, which I did bring up to Helen Gannon, is that the chain of title is broken. And I think, without question, until we have a clear picture of the use of this property, I think it is ridiculous that we would even consider any temporary use permit. And this is something that warrants extensive discussion and investigation by both the city and the new owner as well. The historical use of this property is something that is critical to the environment and culture of Pacifica from then and currently, until the eviction of the current leaseholder at the stables. So, I would like to see you continue this and keep an open mind to a variety of issues that result from this temporary use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Missias. Mr. Murdock?
We have one more speaker, Isabel Christensen.
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Isabel Christensen. I live at 706 St. Lawrence Court. I'm the original owner of this home here, and very upset about never being notified that this is, that the stables are going to be sold to this mega-church. Not only, like every other person has talked about, the traffic and having mass or church six days a week. I'm sure their large church will also be having weddings, funerals, fundraisers, food drives, clothing drives, outreach programs, which will bring in so many people and so many cars. The traffic back here is unbelievable from 50 years ago. It's just night and day. Also, I'm concerned with the stables being, going up about the trails behind my house from 82 mudslides. We've had lots of mudslides since then. I still, to this day, still have drainage problems. Is the church going to be responsible for the drainage, for the upkeep of the mountain, for the upkeep of the trails? Just lots of questions. It just doesn't make sense to have a mega-church in a small, small community on a cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen.
Next is Rebecca.
Okay, and Mr. Murdock, actually, I just want to go ahead and, I mean, if folks are looking to speak, why don't we go ahead and, I just want to get an assessment of everybody who actually intends to speak at this point, because it looks like we're having folks kind of coming in in dribs and drabs, but if you could let us know now, just so we can, again, assess how much longer we're kind of looking at here.
I would like to speak, if that's okay?
Oh, yes, ma'am, absolutely so. Everybody who intends to speak is going to be permitted to, of course. I'm just, I'm trying to get a sense of it.
Okay. All right.
Okay, well, why don't we go ahead? Rebecca, go ahead and please proceed.
Okay. I feel like it's a, this mega-church is a very, it's a very inappropriate setting for a mega-church due to the traffic. That's just, that's just not going to work. That many cars coming in and out and in and out. It needs to be, you know, somewhere where they have better access, ingress and egress. That's just not a good idea. And I live on Oddstead, and in one of the townhomes, and we have enough traffic, we have enough parked cars already. And with that kind of traffic going up and down and up and down the road, it's just going to be a mess. And I just don't see that this is going to work unless the city is going to widen streets and give them a better way to get in and out. And a setting like that, just, that's just not quite right. I feel like, I guess I feel like this is almost just something that got thrown at us, and that I just, I wish I could say more. I'm just kind of tired, I got out of a class. So, it's just not quite the right setting for a mega-church. They need to find somewhere else where there's, there are better streets, wider streets. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next commenter, please.
Next, we have Neil.
Neil, please go ahead.
Hello, thank you. My name is Neil Hayek, and I live at 820 Cape Breton Drive, have lived here for 10 years.
I'm sorry, Neil, we can't, at least I can't hear you. I think you're going to have to speak more loudly, or check your mic.
Okay, I'll try speaking louder. I hope this is better. My name is Neil Hayek, and I live at 820 Cape Breton Drive, have for the past 10 years. I don't have much new to add.
Mr. Murdock, I don't know if it's just me, but I really can't hear.
Chair, I'm having a hard time hearing Mr. Hayek as well.
Is this any better?
Marginally, go ahead.
Okay, sorry for that. So, I live at 820 Cape Breton Drive and have for the past 10 years. I don't have much new to add. I am also surprised by this. It was for someone sitting a pamphlet at my door that I became aware. So, first time joining this meeting. And my main concerns are around the noise and the traffic that this will generate. And my wife and I are looking to start a family soon. I have concerns for what that'll mean in the future. I see plenty of kids playing around Cape Breton Drive. And something I haven't talked about is the property value, the impact on property value. I'm not planning to move anytime soon, at least not the way things are currently, but this church coming there will certainly change that decision. So, nothing else to add. Just quite surprised and certainly do not support this.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Next, we have Zerir.
Hi, my name is Alan Morris, and I wanted to, I'm an urban studies and planning major, and I did a lot of research on environmental impact reports. I have some serious concerns about changing the use of this property. The environmental information form that was included on, you know, in this application is widely incomplete. There's a number of different areas, Section 34, where they're required to address historic and cultural benefits, it was not mentioned. No mention has been made to the noise level that increases in cars that the site will make. No mention, and that's Sections 27. Section 23, no mention has been made to the wildlife that may be affected. There are mountain lions, and I've spoken to a number of people who have actually seen mountain lions on the premises. Mountain lions are a protected animal, and they are being constrained in the Santa Cruz Mountains and in the mountains behind Pacifica. So, basically, if we were to change this land use, increase the number of people, this could interfere with mountain lion habitat. And I think under CEQA, we are required to make the applicants basically get a report that actually examines into any type of CEQA violations. So, I am, I'm not saying I'm against this. I welcome these people to owning the property, but at the same time, I do think that we have a responsibility to make sure that this application is complete and make sure that they're taking the environmental factors into consideration. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Charlotte Allen.
Please go ahead.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Hello, hi, thank you for letting me speak. I do understand that you will be continuing this topic next month, and I appreciate it. As a proud Pacifican, I just want to draw attention to the number of people that have attended and wanted to speak just on postponing the topic, let alone the over 5,000 let alone the over 5,000 signatures on the petition that's circulating and the amazing points that have been brought up that are rightful. And that's the history, the culture, the traffic, and above all, the life safety that something like this imposes. And it is my hope that the reason that you're postponing this to next month is because you too understand the ramifications of all of the, the issues that have been brought up just tonight. And I also have a question slash hope that everyone that wants to speak at next month's meeting, and I'm assuming it's going to be a lot of voices, will have the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock, are there any other comments at this time?
I do not see any other hands raised, Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead then and bring it back to the Commission. And I actually wanted to say a couple of things by way of explanation. One is that I'd made a comment earlier about the public comment not actually being, you know, done in a question-answer format. I think it's very common that questions are raised in the, in the course of public comment that the staff and/or members of the Commission eventually address in the context of their deliberations. But are you hearing me okay? I'm getting a little note here that my speaker's not working.
I'm getting some distortion, Chair.
Okay. Well, a-again, what I would say is that it's, it's not uncommon for us to get comp, questions in the context of public comment that we ultimately, you know, discuss deliberations where the staff addresses. But it's not common in any sort of public meetings, at least under the, the, for things to go in a back-and-forth manner in the context of, in the course of public comment. So there were some questions raised regarding, you know, why the matter was continued and perhaps staff will have the opportunity to speak to, you know, why the matter was continued. And perhaps in the course of any deliberations on the, on the continuance request, we may address other matters that came up. Mr. Murdock, can you speak to why the matter was continued?
Certainly, Chair. I'd like to touch on that point. And then the question as to why this application's even being considered, because I think that's an important fundamental point as well. So this item's being continued because the approval of a temporary use permit, such as the one that Iglesia Ni Cristo has requested to operate a temporary church, require the city to make certain findings, either to approve or to deny the application. This proposal on its face is relatively simple, but as many members of the community have expressed, there are a number of complexities to it in that the indirect impacts from traffic, noise, et cetera, require an appropriate analysis in relation to the findings the city needs to make if it were to approve the permit. Additionally, the site has some complexity in the way it's configured with respect to the city's zoning map. And so the site has split zoning. It's partially, and a minority share of the site is zoned residential. The majority of the site in question for this application is zoned commercial recreation or CR. And over the entirety of the site that's in question is the Hillside Preservation District or HPD overlay. And so the city's also, in analyzing this application, required to consider the appropriate uses and policies and so forth as they apply through the underlying zoning districts. And so even though it's a temporary use permit, it is more complex than typical temporary use permits. And we found that we need additional time to analyze all of the relevant factors to make an informed recommendation to the Planning Commission. As to the question of why this is being considered, the city's municipal code, the Pacifica Municipal Code, has an assortment of uses and types of development that people may apply for through different types of permits. A temporary use permit is a type of permit that property owners can seek or their authorized agents can pursue on a piece of property with property owner authorization. And so the city's not in a position in this case to reject this or other applications without giving them fair consideration, ensuring that they meet the application requirements in terms of minimum informational requirements. And so that's the due process right of this particular applicant. And the city is fairly applying their right to apply under the Pacifica Municipal Code and ultimately to have a public hearing before the Planning Commission on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Ms. Hauser, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hauser, did you have a, a question or a comment or a?
Yeah, yeah, a few, a few items. One is, I wanted to first say that I support staff's recommendation for a continuance on this matter. But I also wanted to say that I appreciate the community input that we've gotten thus far. And it's very obvious that there's like a lot of community concern and attention surrounding this project. We've gotten emails. You know, I see that there are 53 attendees on a continuance. So that's, I mean, I'm understanding that that's a big deal. I, I wanted to touch on something that a couple of community members asked about, which is, since this is being probably continued, if there are future notices, can they potentially go out to like 1,000 feet? And would it be from the circumference? Because it is such a big property and there are clearly a lot of people who are, who are concerned, if, if it's appropriate. And then there were a few questions on, on the sale itself. And when the staff report is provided, it would be helpful to understand if this is a public land sale or if this is just a private land sale. And those are my only two pieces of feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Other comments or input from commission members? Commissioner Berman?
I guess kind of touching off of Commissioner Hauser's question and some of the questions of the community members. Deputy Director Murdoch, can you explain the notification process just in general for an item similar to this?
Absolutely, Vice Chair Berman. And so state law requires for public hearings such as this on use permits and development applications that the city provide a mailed public notice to property owners within 300 feet of the parcel or lot in question where the activity or the development's proposed. The City of Pacifica has expanded well beyond that minimum requirement to 500 feet around the parcel or lot in question. And so while it seems like nearly a doubling, it's actually quite more than that in terms of the number of property owners receiving the notice with that increase in the radius. Additionally, the city has expanded that property owner notification requirement to an occupant notification requirement. And we, we utilize the San Mateo County Assessor Database for information on occupants in addition to property owners. And so we go well beyond the minimum requirements of state law in terms of providing mailed notification. Additionally, for those that may live beyond the 500-foot radius that the city uses for noticing, you can submit a comment to publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us in order to share your thoughts on the project. If you do that, in the case of this temporary use permit, for example, we have assembled an extensive list of email addresses as well for persons that may not necessarily receive the direct notification from the city via US mail so that we can ensure those that have expressed interest in this application receive notification of upcoming hearings. Additionally, we've gone beyond the minimum legal requirements in this case by posting the project information on the city's website. So interested members of the community can review the plans and the explanatory information submitted by the applicant so that we can ensure that those materials are transparently available to the community, especially under the current COVID-19 restrictions. So I think in sum, we go well beyond the requirements of state law by expanding those requirements via local procedure. And so I think, I feel confident that those that are interested in being notified can contact the city to express their interest and ensure that they receive the notice. And also on, on the point, pardon me, also on the point of the boundaries of this particular site. It is an extensive site. However, we have expanded the notification beyond the assessor parcel to reflect the actual underlying lot. It is bigger than just the Corral site. However, per our procedures and the requirements of law for notification, we are strictly applying the minimum notification boundary of the underlying legal lot. And so I, I don't believe at this time that we're going to expand that beyond the, the lot in question where the, the activity is proposed.
Sure. Thank you for the thorough explanation. And also thank you for the efforts in notifying the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Are there any other comments or input or, or for that matter, any motions that commissioners want to make at this time? Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I move we, we continue this item until the February 16th meeting.
Thank you. So we have a motion to continue from Commissioner Godwin to February 16th. Commissioner Ferguson?
I second Commissioner Godwin's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote on that, please?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
Commissioner Liel?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you for all of the public participation and the, and the input on that matter. So we'll then go to Communications and we'll start with Commission Communications. Do we have any Commission Communications? Commissioner Ferguson?
Sorry, forgot to lower my hand.
Okay, thank you. Any Commission Communications? Seeing none, I'll ask if there are any staff communications.
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Two items to relay from staff. I want to make sure the Commission and the community know that the Association of Bay Area Governments, or ABAG, Executive Board, this Thursday will be considering the draft regional housing needs allocation. That's a process that is an extensive statistical and analytical process and public input process that yields, at the end of the process, each local jurisdiction's deemed or determined housing development requirements over the eight-year planning period. For the Bay Area, that eight-year planning cycle begins in 2023. And so the work has already been underway for some time to conduct that statistical analysis. Once the Executive Board from ABAG takes action, presumably this Thursday, they will send the draft methodology for calculating the regional housing needs allocation to the State Housing and Community Development Department. They will take some time to review the Bay Area's methodology and likely will provide comments in spring of 2021. At that time, once the draft methodology has been endorsed, ABAG will release the draft allocation to individual jurisdictions such as Pacifica and other cities and counties in the Bay Area, followed by an appeal period in summer of 2021. And following the completion of that process, the final allocation is expected to be released in late 2021. Based on the current draft methodology, the estimated allocation for Pacifica over the eight-year planning period is approximately 1,900 housing units. And so it would take, I think, a drastic change in the methodology for that number to dramatically increase or decrease. But we're going to track that very carefully on the staff side and keep the Commission and the City Council and the community informed. The other announcement I have is related to the Planning Commission recruitment process. So the city is currently recruiting for two positions on the Planning Commission. The first is a partial term expiring in March of 2023 that opened up due to former Commissioner and now Councilmember Big Stick's election to the City Council. And the other term expires in March 2025 and is currently held by Chair Niblin. And so we hope, of course, that he reapplies. And for anyone else that's interested in the partial or full term, the deadline to apply is noon on February 5th. You can find more information on the application process and form on the Commission and Committee page on the city's website or by contacting the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. I guess then that takes us to adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Berman?
Chair, I just have a quick question for Mr. Murdock. I recall that the City Council drafted up a letter to submit to ABAG regarding the RENA allocation for Pacifica. Was there a response to that letter?
I am not aware of a direct response at this point. I believe all of the public comments have been packaged up for the Executive Board's consideration in the agenda materials for the Thursday meeting. But I will follow up on that point to be sure after tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. So I guess then we'll ask if there's a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Berman?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman has moved that we adjourn. Commissioner Hauser? And that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Hauser. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser? Commissioner Hauser?
It's like that was yes, I think.
I think she's on mute.
All right. Ticking the head knot is the yes. Commissioner Liel?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you. Good, good evening, everybody. See y'all soon.